We are the children, we are who we are. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God.
The Lord is our God, the Lord is our God.
We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God. We are the children of God, we are the children of God.
Oh, God, you are the one that makes me feel alive. Oh, God, you are the one that makes me feel alive. Oh, God, you are the one that makes me feel alive. You are my God, you are my God. Oh, God, you are the one that makes me feel alive. You are my God, you are my God. You are my God, you are my God. You are my God, you are my God. We pray to Jesus, so love and praise you. Hope is so loud, and song is long. We pray to him, and he will be with us. You are my God, you are my God. Oh, God, you are the one that makes me feel alive. You are my God, you are my God. You are my God, you are my God. You are my God, you are my God. Oh, God, you are the one that makes me feel alive. You are my God, you are my God. You are my God, you are my God. You are my God, you are my God. You are my God, you are my God.
Days ago, it was easy, 'cause we're together. We'd help each other as one, as a family. Nowadays, we can't, 'cause we're apart. But I keep on praying and praying, praying for you. You will be my No-No for all my life. It doesn't matter where you are, you're in my heart. You will be my No-No for all my life. It doesn't matter where you are, you're in my heart. Days ago, it was easy, 'cause we're together. We'd help each other as one, as a family. Nowadays, we can't, 'cause we're apart. But I keep on praying and praying, praying for you. You...
Wow! I'm going to be a senator, and I'm going to be a senator. 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 And then later. We will meet in May, while the baroncy is in the city. And we will go to the bar and we will go to the bar. Because we will go to the bar, and we will go to the bar. We will go to the bar, and we will go to the bar. We will go to the bar, and we will go to the bar. And we will go to the bar, and we will go to the bar. We will go to the bar, and we will go to the bar. We will go to the bar, and we will go to the bar. And we will go to the bar, and we will go to the bar. And we will go to the bar, and we will go to the bar. And we will go to the bar, and we will go to the bar.
Thank you, Senator Joseph. I'm going to be a senator. 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 I'm going to be a senator.
I'm going to be a senator. I'm going to be a senator. I'm going to be a senator. I'm going to be a senator.
Speaker, if you want to speak, you can speak. I'm going to speak.
All your friends and loved ones, I know where to make out. Remember, there's a friend in Jesus who will wipe your tears away. And if your heart is broken, just lift your hands and say, "Oh, I know that I can make it. I know that I can stand. Don't matter what may come my way. My life is in your hands. Jesus, I can take it. With Him, I know I can stand. Don't matter what may come my way. My life is in your hands. I know that I can make it. I know that I can stand. Don't matter what may come my way. My life is in your hands. Jesus, I can take it. With Him, I know I can stand. Don't matter what may come my way. My life is in your hands. I know that I can make it. I know that I can stand. Don't matter what may come my way. My life is in your hands.
Pastor John, Pastor John from 17, 14. Pastor John, Branger Principal.
Don't matter what may come my way. My life is in your hands. My life is in your hands. My life is in your hands. My life is in your hands.
Thank you, Senator Joseph. I'm going to be a senator. I'm going to be a senator. I'm going to be a senator. And I'm going to be a senator. Walter John. I'm going to be a senator.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. O God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast, and our eternal home. O God, our heavenly Father, we begin today by praising your great and mighty name, because you are the Creator of heaven and earth, and everything therein, and the sustainer of the entire universe. We are so grateful to you for your amazing goodness, and for your blessings over this great nation of Micronesia, the state of Panopei, all the homes and families of these beautiful Pacific islands, and each one of us individually. We are so thankful to you, O God, for bringing us hope through even the toughest of times, strengthening us for your purposes. We thank you for bringing us safely through the long period of the pandemic. We praise you for your great love and care. We are grateful to you for your mercy and grace. We are thankful to you that you are always with us and will never leave us alone. Thank you for your incredible sacrifice, so that we might have freedom and life. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here this morning today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you, Lord. Please bless this opening session today. Bless all our senators present. You always have a divine agenda. Our prayer today is that yours will be done, not only in the opening session, but through each and every session in the future as well. Take what we have, and multiply our efforts as only you can. Steer our intentions to align with your righteous will. Remind us of your faithful provision for every time of need. May all glory go up to you. Blanket us with your peace today, Father. Keep us physically safe, and guard our hearts and minds. Keep Christian love at the foremost forefront of our deliberations today and always, and be the guiding light for all we set out to accomplish. God of our destinies, guide our senators this day by your higher wisdom. Lord, watch over them, and use their work for your glory. Replace fear with faith, pessimism with hope, and error with truth. May our lawmakers become your instruments for enabling justice to roll down like waters, and righteousness like a mighty stream. Provide our legislators with wisdom from above, strength and courage for the living of these days. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive them that trespasses against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face to shine upon you, and be gracious unto you. The Lord lift up his countenance upon you, and grant thee peace. And now may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God, and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit continue to abide with us now, always, and forevermore. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Walter John. I'm going to be a senator. I'm going to be a senator.
Kalaan ang pinipromi, Senator Joseph, puwede privilege ocean mamaya, takamugadin puan maangin, mayel pastor, osumbata, principal kan, o tron school in N S T A. Kalaan ang pinipromi. Masulab, sang Senator Joseph, iban ponos of floor leader.
Kalaan ang main, Mr Speaker. Ibatongon ka sa palis ngol si karanuwa kong kupur, honorable members korusya. San salma, ranuwa uya, ritan samajail, uya kupur kasondi, and jepene kaysake wala slateru. O san salma, puwede kesempalay ranuwa, amiyeluk, o iraila balabakan, anyang pati ang ran kesempalu. Mermal kupuraya buingkat, cholonya isumawo, kbc irailakan pa ti ang child. Imen pagkita murun kbcu, wada child ban katskiyang irail, ewu lubulub. Ri iban baton, chabi kita, Chief Minister U, yey honorable Rubino Primo, Mayor and nukwaro Municipal Government, yey senord, honorable senord Leopold, Irail Speaker Kan, mayangaki Speaker and Madalim Municipal Government, the Madalim Minijansap, yey honorable Tyson David, the coach Madalim. Speaker and U Municipal Government, yey honorable Walter Andon, Speaker and Colonia Town Government, yey honorable Philmon Henry. Speaker and Sukas Government, yey honorable Albert Johnny, minya iswaziblu ya president and MCO, the Municipal Council Association. Speaker and Net District Government, yey Mayor Rico, honorable Mayor Rico Wendolin. Mister Yowkim Lonny Junior, may acting Chief Minister, Chief Master and Sukas Municipal Government. Vice Speaker and Sukas Municipal Council, yey honorable Perez Hamaric. Wulya ben song kongkusinat nan momoten, U Councilman, yey DJ Obispo, temabil langlangi iswalabu. Honorable Salteretse Junior, mayblu ya amen, wulya ben nan momoten Minijansap and Madalim Government. Irailkan pa ti, yey Mister Kili Jack, mayu ya Ponbei Kaunin P P A. O Mister June Panwalo, mayu ya Administrator and Social Security. Speaker kan menama, natswazi yang pati ang irailko may sakasakarki. Aban moyemoyang memberjikan in kbc. Ani oralab, nuwawu imen pagkikchailan kak, kasamogi irailbuko, may baton sakarkitar ewu lubulubun.
Masulab ang floor leader, iban ponos of Vice Speaker. Kalaan ang gong main speaker.
Kombal Ma, minijew. Atsaka kombal ma, minijew.
Iba, itagaling kombal. Child ban kombal, minijew. Child kombal ma. Pagui Senator Joseph.
Vice Speaker, Komugetinpoan Maangin Mbiayon. Kamui, Senator Artuwie.
Kalanganan Komugetinpoan, Mr. Speaker. Moni Ipan Pato, Aymin Patyang Sabulmumuy Muntungol Sakaratan Keipuni Wau, Mediangan Milang. Melanam Malwot, Ay Sakaratan Wau Bang Kupromi, Melan, Wau Nguvais, Flor, Oriyano, Members, Coros. Menzongwot, O Wau Nguvai, Melan, Irayakan, Patyang Tayl, Local Chief Executive. Mr. Speaker, Ipan, Ipan Pausela, Dama, Flor Leader, Songoan Kabes, Melan, Ong Telegation In Soqueskan. Imin Uliandi Ki, Telegation In Soqueso, O Gudai Kasamo, Ilolun Wayman. Mayay, Imouya, Flor Leader and Council, Honorable Yukisusaya. Imin Ansansal, Maana Kapwot, Ebil Puho, Pukolak, Namdombey. Niuyaya Chief, NR, Ababali, Paydian Zombi, Omebit, Siniyakan, Bang Totoakong Zombi. Obilwa Sakan, Makoniya. Ayimet, Mayimut... Bagi Taylak, Satria, Komugetinpoan.
Kalangan, Senator Artuwie, Ong Speaker. Voice of Privilege, Mbiya. Kamui, Senator Artuwie.
Moni Ika Kyampatayang Kupurajaraangwot, Imin Patong Uliandi, Nayo Senator Joseph. Moway, Iminkapatayang, Edungol. Way Sabulmumuy, Maasen, Miampatayang Sabulmumuy Maasen, Kosomosom, Makom, Togekiyab, Moisaboko Isoko. O Sabulmar, Keitilapalap Coros, Namdombeywat. Ayimin Patong Uliang, Ay Senator Josephu, Bagi, Ketketet, Irayanket, Kasamogi. Emen Sabuluman, Sangro, Sewmasing Kusap, Yayi Sewan In Tabek. Obilkapatayang, Bilamen, Soroor, Sewligin, Awakpa, Obilwiamin, Steve Minister, Rewino. Ayimet.
Kalanganan Komugetinpoan. Kalanganan, Senatorko, Komugetinpoan Maangin Mbiya. Kalanganan, Kedokan Coros, Tayl, Takumail, Patyang Resleger, Menzongra. Kalanganan Komugetinpoan. Kamui, Senator Artuwie.
Kalanganan, Iminto, Parintatong, Yungay, Niwadan, Bilang Kabes, Naas.
Senator Edmond, You, Flor, Senator Loyola.
Kalanganan Kamui, Yungay Senator Edmond, Kalanganan Kamui Speaker. Edungol Sakarannilang, Keipuni, Nkakpuli, Sabulmumuy Muntungol, Mediangar. Sewiltongnan, Wasan, Niwalamalam, Edungol Wau Nguvai Kamui Speaker, Wau Nguvai Vice Speaker, Wau Nguvai Flor Leader, Obilnyanswot, Wau Nguvai Reano, Senatorskan Coros, Tayl, Biyati, Ranwot. Bilwau Nguvai Raileko, Yangket, Patro, Nankalery. Bilwau Nguvai, Men Dombey Coros, Yangkaytayl, Nanmen Kabesakan, Bilshort, Yangkaytayl, Nanmen Kabesakan. Edungol Wau Wongkumail. Speaker, Anshukset, Ipan, Uliandi, Net Telegation, Nalresleger, Autautki, Nanyayos, Senator Edmond. Ouyat, Tungal Kabes, Niduanat, Trakatame, Bilnye, Level Ben Waykei, Waynet, Yangpatyankaytayl, Nankalery, Anshwot. Apo Nkaksansal, Mehat, Tungal, Paasan, Short, Paasan, Taasan, Bonusush, Apo Paasan, Taasan, Bonwau. Anshukset, Speaker, Imin Dorn, Imin Kayland, Donese, Patoton, Chairman in Finance, Net District Resleger, Yayi Anthony Tyner, O Patoton, Chairman in Jayango, Net District Resleger, Honorable Fred Alfred Tamarlan, Ipan Bagi Kayland, Ketyam, Patongwang, Nangra, Ay, Level.
Senator Loyola, Voice of Privilege.
Speaker.
Kamui, Senator Harris.
Kalanganan Komugetinpoan, Speaker, I Patyang Sakaratan, Wau Keipuni, Waulap, Mediangar. Wau Nguvai, Kamui Speaker, Vice Floor. Reano, Senatorkan Corusyen, Taylkan Coros, Mbatayang Tayl, Nankalery. Obiliyang Patayang Tayl, Nanmen Kabesakan, Raseng Radio, Internet. Speaker, Omun Makarilangay, Rususo, Unlike Senator Loyola, Wudani, Bilkasembalki, Yen, Yang Donese, Irail. Irailkan, Melet, Eleto, Yenkakiang, Momot, Nan, Pungan, Walkasembalki, Menzongan Ranwot. Tadayna, Sanjale, Reiminan Ki, Apo Tunitiwat, Yenkak, Bagidak Tayl, Donese, Keiyu. Paraton Speaker, In Colonia Town, Yayi Speaker, Honorable Philmon Henry, Tayl, Donese, Keiyu, Ulapulap. Hey Kamelalem, Donese, Wobil Tokayer, Raile Speakerko, Coros Speaker, Mai Kolokolta, Bilniyanswot, Niemana Kapmen, Maiuyakilikilalchele, Bilmen Bagidak Tayl, Yenkak. Donese, Keiyu, Bilewulapulap, Yayi Uchin, Augustine, Maistman, Sabungol. Kalanganan Komugetinpoan, Speaker.
Kalanganan.
Tega Komalti, Mas Speaker.
Kamui, Vice Speaker.
MoTega Komalti, Sinayshukis.
Pakwak, Tayl, Komalti, Sinayshukis, Tayl, Bang Komal, Sinayshukis, Tayl, Komal, Ay.
Young set the good, we can go. Young set the tempo, perre, perre.
Gotta give you that gas, whatever else.
There you are, done. So beautiful, yes. Okay, who's next? Oh, damn it.
I'm next. I'm next.
I'm gonna do it, right?
I'm gonna do that, actually.
Come on up, get home again. What rose, make them wear, wear, ah, yeah. The way, the way, eh, way, loleti. Come on up, get home again. What rose, make them wear, wear, ah, yeah. The way, the way, eh, way, loleti. Yiwiye, come on, come on, more. Way, fan, we're so lisa, we're, 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 we're. Yiwiye, come on, come on, more. Way, fan, we're so lisa, we're, 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 we're. Come in, lay, lay. Lo, 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 le, lo, 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 le, eloke. Oh, no, no, lo, le, lo, 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 le, eloke. Yiwiye, come on, come on, more. Way, fan, we're so lisa, we're, 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 we're. Come in, lay, lay. I'm finally, we're both, then, so, so, baby. Oh, way, can't, so, baby, keep it, now, we're long. Oh, no, no, lo, le, lo, 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 le, eloke. Oh, no, no, lo, le, lo, 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 le, eloke. Yiwiye, come on, come on, more. Way, fan, we're so lisa, we're, 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 we're.
Break it.
Voice of Privilege. Speaker. Voice of Privilege. Tepakpatro, Nambey, Aysakissiu, Yayi Retroror. Voice of Privilege. Kamui, Senator Edwin.
Hey Kalangan, Mr. Speaker, Edungol Wau, Tapatabat. Patyang Sabulmum, Sakaratan, Keipuni, Waulap, Menye, Wau Nguvai Kamui, Vice Floor, Memberkan. Melan, Wau Nguvai Irail, Uliaben Municipal Governmentkan Coros, Yangpatayang Tayl, Menzingeranats. Niyanswot, Ibilmen Bagida, Tayl, Yenkak, Bilwau Nguvai, Paraton, Lukan Kalow, The Chief In Sabwak, Yayi Mr. Colin Frank, Obiliyang Patayang Tayl, Nisan, Kalangan.
Kalangan, Senator Edwin, Kamui, Senator Perez.
Kalangan, Speaker, Ipan, You, Flor, Ong Senator Net.
Senator Perez, You, Flor, Ong Senator Net. Senator Net.
Kalanganan, Speaker, Kalanganan, Senator Perez. Surimakin Pasan, Maanin Keipa. Edungol Sakarren, Wau Kapatabat, Om Sakarren, Lapwekwekan, Mediangay, Wekia Anshwot. Edungol, Ne, Palisakoyek, Etontan. Ah, Senator Perez, Wekunkukumero, Biltralititoulu. Metene, Yen, Donese, Pilay, Donese, Sabulamay Ma, Te, Edungol Ma. Speaker, In, Pinin Kukusanet, Nambey, Hq, Inwin, Matilanim. Yayi, Honorable Speaker, Tensantebi. O, Bil Donese, Wawai, Emen, Pinin Kukusanet, Yayi Salter, Itse, Junior. Okay, Tadayna, Tayl, Melaw, Ulapulapugin Ramah, Ay, Bagi.
Kalangan, Ashalam, Sang Senator Perez, Ipan Donese, Senator Edmond.
Hey Kalangan, Speaker. Patyang Desakaratan Wau Kan, Mediangamuwa, Wau Nguvai Kamui, Vice Floor, Tayl Corusyen, Yang Patyantan Tanparang. Bil Bil Kabes, Wekii, Ni, Bil, Maana Kapmenet, Men, Pilapten, Leltunan, Ten Password. Sutupi Kabes, Ayimin Kabes, Yayi Mr. Jordan Torres. Maana Kapmenet, Sapten, Suusan, Ouyak, Port Member, Radio Station, Naisubunginak, Yero, O, Awar. Men Tayl, Poniasakma, Yow, Dabalala, Bulapulap.
Kalangan, Senator Edwin.
Speaker. Kamui, Senator. Retroror, Mal, Takair.
Takair.
Nakumban, Moiten.
Ashalam, Retroror, Akte, Patyian, Nambey, Shakwalu, Yayan Shol, Takair. Kamui.
Kalangan, Mr. Speaker. Itoal Wau, Kapten, Patyang Kupurkan, Bang Kupurans, Semoral Code. Wau Kamui Speaker, Vice Floor, Honorable Members, Coros, O Irayakan, May Yankaytayl, Nan Ozam, Yekupurwut. Benbaro, Nkataman, Ki, Kametin Sap, Yankaytayl, Bang, Tuven, Nan Conference One, Glavry, Awel, Branwood.
Mbiya, De, Bilpakair, Sang Speaker. Kamui, Senator Edwin.
Kalangan, Speaker, Moisitabat, Ong, Ta, Wau Yawaranat, Ap, Kametin Jayango, Bilbang, Tuven. Senkye, Uliban Municipal Governmentkan, Lalbana, Yarat. Ma, Saka, Tuven, Murun, Seisinwat, Ha, Bang, Moyn, Apalila. Kusondiyo, Me, Bang, Murun Sewas. Ma, Mo, Ma, Si, Bang, Uyakawala, Maso, Ipan Pokala, O. Rysketsual, Ta, Mi, Amongkang. O, I, Moisitabat, Ong, Raile, Poroto, Moay, Masume, Ma, Speaker, Npaiti, Raile, Nabilalato. Ap, Bil Mia, Kusondin, Korongrong, Murun Sewas. Wot, Pinkak, Tuang, Chief Executivekan, Ma, Bil, Sabulmatay, Kusanetin, Sakaw. Er, Moyn, Sutupi, Moawasang, Ipan Rysketsual, Wata, Mia, Sabulmumuy, Kusondi, Yarat. Ta, Bil, Kawala, Anshwai, Mo, Ipan, Petrowantra, Anshwot, Wekia, Raile, Ketketma, Amoin, Ipan, Rysketsual, Meeting, O, Pungan, Yenkak. Ewa, Anshwomau, Me, Bang, Sutupi, Belanggolang, Ta, Kusondikan, Ma, Moyn, Mia. Kalangan, Mr. Speaker.
Kalangan, Kamui, Senator Kar, Ashalam, Sang Senator Edwin, Kamui, Senator Kar.
Kalanganan Komugetinpoan, My Speaker. Ika Sabali, Sakarren Wau, Patyang Sabulmum, Patoyern, Milang. Edungol, Wau, Wintu, Tuwo, De, Bang Kupromi, Wau Nguvais. Wau Nguvai, Flor Leader, Oriyano, Senatorkan Coros. Ibil, LuKuyang, Wauwet, Irail, Ulya, Bekasembalkan, MawuluYan, Waykan. Mawiata, Win Dombey. Kom Kupur, Speaker, Puyenkak, Bakair, Obil, Bagbek. Bangwet, Edetyan, Patoyern, Nantarobweyume, Teksinlukoyume, Ipatowan, Ong Bang Kupromi. Niduan, Ipatyang, Pinin Totoak, Yume, Kokohutap, Borenkak, Kabes, KamuMataan, Wukitaklakan, Mbiyanan. Mia Yar, Nan Sawan, Matayl. Paasan, Kusanditin, Nbsm, O Kabes, Wet. Megget, Dombey, Obil, Bang, Lelang. Wasakan, Me, Me, Nbsm, Melan, Men Dombey, Mesepukoki, Kukusan Ye, Nan Winamerka. Er, Pinin Totoakwet, Me, Tamen, Bilibil, Tapwenkak, Ta, Totoakwet, Ong Winamerka. Yangpatyen, Saban, Masil, Taasan, Dombey, Ranwot. Tapwekia, Anshwomau, Edungol Nki, Ayenkak, Kabes, Ong Bang Kupromi. Me, Kabukon, Kametin Environment, O Climate Relation, Me, Edungol Nki. Kabukaw, Coros, O Manamankan, Makin Mia, Ong Chairman, Aranwot, Yenkak, Patoyang, Vice Chairman. O, Ibil, Bagbagi, Honorable Senatorkan Coros. Ren, Bilkak, Patyang, Totoakwet, Ni, Tuan, Honorable Senator Loyola, Bang Ababali, Arayn, Anshwom, Mr. Bang, Patyang. Bilniyanswot, Imin, Bil, Bagi, Bang Kupuran, Chairman, In Kametikan Coros, Mi, Patyang, The Matechow. Yenkak, Kupurwun, Yenkak, Excuse, Nan. Meeting, In Kametikan, Me, Bang, Uyuyawi, Nan Arayn, Anshwom, Mr. Bang, Patro, O Patyang Kumail. Ayimet, Edungol, Iran Kabes, O, Iran, Bagbagi. Kalangan, My Speaker.
Kalangan, Senator Carl, Wekikabes, Masansal, Sang Kamui. Kalangan, Mia Tre, Retroror, Te Pakair. Masalam, Retroror, Te Pakair, Sang Senatorkan, Ah, Mona, Tayl, Bang. Sabal, Talangan, Nambey, Bayu, Ayimet, Bagi, Tayl, Komal, Maminitew. Tayl, Komal, Maminitew, O, Imen. Tayl Sabal, Kamui Flor Leader, Abrom.
Kalangan, Kamui, My, Mr. Speaker. Kom Kupur, Edungol Sakarren, Wau Sabal. Speaker, Wekii, Kasembalkan, Sang Matayl, Channel. Emen, Kapung, Wasakis, Nan, Edungol Kabes, Metene, Kaunin, Social Security, Yangpatyang Tayl. Yenkak, Sanjale, Me, Maana Kapusutu, Yangpatyang Tayl. Speaker, Nwau, Imin, Blew, Sakarren, Momot, Kasembalkwet, O, Bagi, Tayl, Suspender, Dora, Business, O, Sabal, Talapan, Nambey, Bayu. Mayay, Iditan, Kametijororo, Yoo. Karyaman.
Sanjalam, Wau, Komugetok, Tayl, Sabal, Talan, Nambey, Bayu, Yayi Appointment Of Special Committee, To Inform The Governor, That Resleger Is Ready To Transact Business. Wekii, Sanjale, Mbiya, Karyaman, Ben, Komugetok, Tayl, Ketketier, Ong, Nambey, Bayu. O, Maikupurya, Pinkakitiata, Irail, Kametin Silumen, Me, Bang, Inform, Kabina, Make Tayl, Kedlangan, Nasabulmatayl, Uyakupur, Kusondi, Kayshakeo. Kametin Silumen, Me, Bang, Inform Governor Oliver, Yayi Senator Exite. Madam Chair Senator Leaka, O Vice Speaker Mikel. O Vice Speaker Mikel, Me, Bang, Ya, Chairman, And Committee, Special Committee, Wait On Governor. Ayimet, Kametin, Moymoyang, Murun Sewaswet, Ranwot, Yenkak, Suwang, Kabina, Reporto, Momot, Lakap, Danshukarwaro. Ayimet, Mia Tre, Kujur, Damashen, Benurawo.
Speaker, Moyn, Virgulage, Bagi, Tayl, Ketket, Bang, Iditan, Kametin Silumen, Ipatowan, Bang, Imen, Bagi. Ren, Towe, Kanang, Kametijororo, Magdeka, Tuven, Nan Wasan, Tuven, Resleger, Palio, Wasan, Kofi, O, Dalengkak, Palio. Dalengkak, Kusaneedi, O, Wewekian, Sotam, Magdeban, Tuwang, Kabena. O, Ipan, Bagi, Speaker, Bang Kupromi, Emen, Dun Totoak, Nkakavelapul, Wengkakiang, Yang Kametu, Makamkakmeidang, Ipan, Peinitiata, Istrun, Totoakuma, Bang, Sosakametin. Kalangan, Speaker.
Kalangan, Kamui, Senator Edwin.
Kalangan, Speaker, Mo, Imin, Patowan, O, Masansaler, Makomitiata, Ap, Azukunang, Chairman In Finance, Yang Patyang, Senkye, Bti, Yume, Bil Still On. Sutupi, Me, Wot, Me. Mo, Ipatowan, Da, Imet, Ah, Komugetin, Ah, Te, Wudan, Kametin Silumen, Te, Wakpaham, Maso, Ah, Komugetin, Me, Bang, Patow. Kalangan.
Speaker.
O, Vice Speaker.
Kalangan, Bo, Moyn, Kawitma, Wap, Manibisutukunang. Bagi, Kametin Silumen, Orang, Bang, Karekita, Kabena, Resleger, Kialar. Retama, Kupur, Bang, Kapatayang, Agak, Uya, Iran Kaberbatkay. Ama, Iran Kawit, Me, Bitatapi, Yayi, Apa, Ma, Perunti Armia, Kametu, Agak, Uang, Ata, Ni, Pasabang, Ya, Kupur, Ah, Er, Itu, Esudan, Ananet, Tite, Yero. Moyn, Sabulmumuy, Tita, Watar, Me, Silumen, Niduan, Anapan, Momotwet. Kalangan, Speaker.
Kalangan, Kom Kupur, Vice, Da, Senator Edwin. Kamelalem, Iditan, Silumen, Kakuliang Tayl, Ong, Inform Governor, Make Tayl, Kedlangan, Nan, Uyakupur. Me, Bitatapi, Yayi, Sanjale, Muwutang, Tayl, Bang, Sabulman, Kupen, Uyakupur, Yoo, Tayl, Kamalata, Bti. Ang, Magatun, Kupurwala, Iditan, Speaker, Mbiya Yar. Masalam, Ipan, Donese, Flor Leader. Speaker, Omun, Tayl, Bang, Kair, Kom Kupur, Mia, Batuton, Omen, Maana Kap, Kasembalk, Mimen, Bagi, Tayl, Yenkak. Wau Nguvai, Justino Silbanus, Ta, Orun Munak, Men Bagidak Tayl, Ketchyang, Ulapulap. Kamui, Speaker, Nwau, Imen, Patowan, Sakarren, Momot, Kasembalkwet, O, Bagi, Tayl, Yenkak, Ketchang, Nan, Uyakupur. O, Sabali, Wasan, Uyak, Uyak, Uyalamalam, Subject to Call.
Karyaman.
Kalangan, Sanjalam, Wau, Komugetok, Moni, Ipan, Donese, Komugetok, Maikupurya, Pinkak, Begitar, Ren, Wan, Paron, Henry, Nkak, Uya, Lowlow, Nudungiti, Sabulmatayl, Uyakupur, Ranwot. Sergeant, Kamukalu, Wata, Tema, Wan, Paron, Henry. Regadi, Sakarata. Kupur, Sewulaban Kauno, Ento, Toulangikumail, Urtian, Dangikumail. Kalangan, O, Mark, Enat, Tayl, Count, Jesus Christ, Dimpak, Labalap, Bang, Samatay, Court. Atay, Sewupen, Bang, Kaminiman, En, Nensaraw, En, Kedinyayang, Kumail, Sangmet, Bil Bang, Kokola, Desotu. Amen. Coros, Moitung, Komugetok, Tayl, Ranwoleti, O, Sabal, Ben, Subject to Call, Masan, Yayi. O, Masan, Isso, Kuitaro, Tayl, Bang, Komalti, Ranwot. O, Imen, Kabrayang, Tayl, Senatorkan, LuKeta, Riya Tayl. Local Chiefskan, O Speakerkan, O.